Thank you. I'd like to bring to order the May 26, 2020, regular scheduled board meeting of the Richland 2 Board of Trustees. If I can please have a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chair, I move that we convene in executive session for the purpose of discussing student appeals and student mission requests into the district's adult education program.
Second.
Motion's been made by Dr. Conshen Parker, seconded by Dr. Holmes.
It's Cookie.
Mackie.
Sorry, by Ms. Mackie.
You're fine.
Um, if I can, is there any discussion? All right, if not, if we can please take the vote at this time.
I'll have to raise my hand.
Motion is unanimous.
All right, motion passes unanimously. We will now go into executive session. All right, I'd like to reconvene the May 26, 2020, regularly scheduled board meeting for the Richland 2 Board of Trustees, where we officially exit the executive session at 4:59. Motion was made by Mr. Shad. It was seconded by Ms. Agostini, and the vote was unanimous. At this time, I will now have our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance, Ms. Agostini.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, I'm going to read a poem called "The Great Realization" by Tom Roberts. "Tell me the one about the virus again, then I'll go to bed. But, my boy, you're growing weary, sleep it thoughts about your head. Please, that's one of my favorite, I promise just once more. Okay, snuggle down, my boy, though I know you know full well, the story starts before then, in a world I once would dwell. It was a world of waste and wonder, of poverty and plenty, back before we understood why hindsight's 20-20. You see, the people came up with companies to trade across the land, but they slowly got much bigger than we ever could have planned. We'd always have our wants, but now it got so quick, you could have anything you dreamed of in a day and with a click. We noticed families stopped talking, that's not to say they never spoke, but the meaning must have melted, and the work-life balance broke. And the children's eyes grew square, and every toddler had a phone. They filtered out the imperfections, but amidst the noise, they felt alone. And every day, the skies grew thicker, till you couldn't see the stars, so we flew in planes to find them, while down below, we filled our cars. We drive around all days in circles, we've forgotten how to run, we swapped the grass for tarmac, shrunk the parks till they were none. We filled the sea with plastic because our waist was never capped, until each day when you went fishing, you'd pull them out already wrapped. And while we drank and smoked and gambled, and our leaders taught us why, it's best to not upset the lobbies, more convenient to die. But then, in 2020, a new virus came our way. The governments reached and told us all to hide away. But while we all were hidden amidst the fear and all a while, the people dusted off their instincts. They remembered how to smile. They started clapping to say thank you and calling up their moms. And while their car keys gathered dust, they would look forward to the runs. And with the skies less full of voyagers, the earth began to breathe, and the beaches bore new wildlife, which scuffled off into the sea. Some people started dancing, some were singing, some were baking. We'd grown so used to bad news, but some good news was in the making. And so when we found the cure and were allowed to go outside, we all preferred the world we found to the one we'd left behind. Old habits became extinct, and they made us, they made way for new, and every simple act of kindness was now given its due. But why did it take a virus to bring the people back together? Well, sometimes you got to get sick, my boy, before you start feeling better. Now, lie down and dream of tomorrow and all the things that we can do, and who knows, if you dream hard enough, maybe some of them will come true. We now call it "The Great Realization," and yes, since then, there have been many. But that's the story of how it started and why hindsight's 20-20. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. A very appropriate poem for the time. If I can now have a motion on the agenda. I need, everybody's muted.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Mackie.
I move to approve the agenda for the May 26, 2020, regular board meeting of the Richland 2 School Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Motion's made by Ms. Mackie. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote.
Motion carries, six yes, one no.
All right, motion carries, as Ms. Sherman said, six yes, one no. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. If I can please have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
I move to approve the consent agenda for tonight's May 26, 2020, meeting.
Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote.
Motion is unanimous.
All right, the motion passes unanimously. We will now move on to executive session items. If I can please have a motion on item 6 dot 1, student appeals.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Dr. Holmes.
I'd like to make a motion for student number one, that we adhere to the district's recommendation. Uphold the district's recommendation.
You gonna do them separate?
Um, I can't. Or do you want me to do them together?
It's your motion, but I think we can.
Okay, Mr. Chair, let me repeat then. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we uphold the district recommendation for students number one and two.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Dr. Holmes, seconded by Ms. Mackie. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll have the vote.
Motion is unanimous.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Item 6 dot 2, there was no, no item to discuss, and item 6 dot 3 is not necessary. We'll now move on to item 7 dot 1, a report from the ombudsman, Dr. Davis.
Hey, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair and members of the board, good afternoon. We have with us this evening our district ombudsman, Ms. Kelly Johnson, who's going to provide for you a brief update regarding what she's been up to since being appointed to the position of ombudsman, but more so also give you some sort of a very high-level overview of what her primary responsibilities are. I think in another document that she may have shared with you all, it may be a more in detail, in detail information, but we wanted to give you and the public some information regarding the district's ombudsman annual report. So I'll turn it over this time to Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Chairman Manning, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Davis, thank you for the opportunity to present the first district ombudsman annual report. This evening, I will cover a variety of areas, and they are as follows. Key functions, guiding principles, the ombudsman process, what the ombudsman can do versus not, and when to contact the ombudsman. I would like to begin with a quote from Alan Saporta. "The best way to escape from a problem is to solve it. The hope is for resolutions to be advantageous for all parties involved." In other words, a win-win situation. The ombudsman empowers individuals to overcome disputes, builds and strengthens relationships, provides information and resources, fosters collaboration and effective communication, and identifies a way to contribute to systemic improvements. The ombudsman follows the International Ombudsman Association guiding principles, and they are as follows. Independence, neutrality, and impartiality, confidentiality, and informality. The ombudsman process entails listening, developing options, as well as guiding. Next slide. Next slide. The ombudsman can listen and clarify concerns, help partners or visitors identify options, provide information regarding board policies and district regulations, coach individuals on how to prepare for conversations that lead to collaborative solutions, guide individuals to the correct resources, foster effective communication, as well as track trends. The ombudsman cannot receive formal complaints, impose or overturn disciplinary decisions, make or set board policies or district regulations, advocate on any particular position, participate in litigation, provide legal advice, or intervene in legal or administrative proceedings. When to contact the ombudsman? Contact the ombudsman when you don't know where to go for help, have trouble finding the information or process that you need, would appreciate a confidential sounding board, need an impartial perspective, are uncertain about taking a problem through the established channels, want help thinking through how to deal directly with a challenging situation, or want to discuss strategies or possible options and resources to resolve a concern, or feel that communication with Richland School District 2 may have broken down. This year, as of May 18th, we've had 857 visitors. That number entails phone calls, emails, and the Richland 2 Contact Us Form. As always, it is my pleasure to serve, and if there are any questions, I will take those at this time.
Board members, questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Mackie.
Just wanted to say that I'm thankful to Dr. Davis and those who made the ombudsman position a reality. I know we've talked for years about having a mechanism by which people can just get information and know where to go when they have questions or need some direction. A question for Ms. Johnson, thank you for the presentation and for keeping us abreast of what's going on. Just out of curiosity, what's the mechanism by which most people contact you? Do they call? Is it emails, website? Just curious.
It's a combination of both, but it's very easy and most accessible for individuals to click on the Richland 2 Contact Us Form button, and that links them to me directly.
Awesome. Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Keep up great work.
Thank you.
Dr. Johnson, make sure you unmute. You're still muted, Dr. Elkins.
Okay, I think I have unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to say to Ms. Johnson, thank you so much for the presentation. Just have a few questions for you. The first question is, you mentioned that we had 857 visitors. Can you tell us the majority of the concerns that they had out of that 857? Or provide us later with maybe a chart of concerns or the reasons for the phone calls?
Um, I would be happy to do that at a later time. I do not have a breakdown in front of me, you know, to, in order to share that information, but I would be happy to do that at a later time. Just as a reminder, to protect the integrity of this office, I'm not able to share details without the express permission of a visitor.
Yes. Don't want details, just want to have an idea of the concerns that the parents are having. And with that, I know you mentioned being a confidentiality sounding board. Can you give us an example of what you mean by that?
If someone comes and they want to talk through how to resolve any particular issue, I'm able to listen and hear the concern and help any individual navigate processes if it's their desire to do so. Reporting to this office is a voluntary process, and you're not required to come to me. However, I am a resource that's available to any student, employee, or parent.
Okay. And have we shared this with students as well as parents, that they can come out, and if so, how is that information distributed to the parents and the students?
Well, as you can see by that number, they are definitely able to reach me. The Richland 2 Contact Us Form is available on the district website, and that link allows anyone in the community and in the district to reach, breach me.
Okay, thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. You're muted, Ms. Agostini.
You're good.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, my computer, I'm not even touching it, it'll flip back and forth. But Dr. Elkins asked a couple of my questions. I just wanted to talk a little bit more again about the confidentiality. So regardless of, Ms. Johnson, who you talk to in the district, whether it be a teacher, a principal, an administrator, the superintendent, you maintain confidentiality of whoever reaches out to you with their concern?
I maintain confidentiality. Let me also share that, that is to the extent which is allowed by law.
Okay.
And also, to the extent that there's no reason for me to believe that someone could be injured or cause injury to someone else.
Okay, very good. And then also, just sort of on the lines that Dr. Elkins was going in, I would love to see what the trends are and get your opinion on areas where we can focus on for improvement. And then my final question, as you'd mentioned a couple of times, district policies and regulations. When you say district regulations, are you referring to policy or is there something else?
Policy and/or administrative rules.
Okay.
And let me, let me also add before closing, I would like to say that Dr. Davis is committed to focusing on continuous improvement. And so he's always looking for ways to improve any aspect of the district's work. And one of the areas that I'm currently working on right now is related to a digital platform, which will give us some real-time tracking and information. So I think that you'll find that very helpful.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Dr. Holmes, sorry, Dr. Davis, did you need to say something?
Please, no, I'll, I'll let Dr. Holmes go.
Dr. Holmes?
Ms. Johnson, I just want to say thank you for doing a fabulous job, and I think this office has been necessary, and it's good to have you aboard. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Other board members? I'd also say I appreciate the work you do. It's nice to have that single contact, no matter where it is in the district. And I, in particular, appreciate the idea that it's an impartial voice. I know I've talked with Dr. Davis on a number of occasions where there were cases where administrators or others, their decision maybe wasn't the final outcome. And not to say that that could be the norm, but it is nice to know that there is an impartial voice when we have parents or others that have issues, that can handle that.
Yes.
Single pain across the district. Dr. Davis, did you want to speak now?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Manning, and to the members of the board. I think it's also important for us to remember that the ombudsman's position is not a position that necessarily that keeps tally of issues and problems and concerns in the districts for the purpose of reporting that information back to the board, for the board to determine what should be the cost of next steps and actions. That information should be shared with district administration to see if there's processes and procedures that may be limited or not in place, that should be put into place, that may be to address some of those things. The areas vary from across the district for what a concern may be. We may get a concern about a bus, or parents reaching out to us about buses, or buses not showing up on time. And so after we get enough of those, or we hear from that, hear about that, we may need to put in some sort of process or something in place that allows that bus to get to class or get to school, get to that, that community on time, to get those students to their classrooms. There may be numbers of cases, and I think that one of the things that Mrs. Johnson has shared is that the office is to help the individuals find resolution. So the, the ombudsman's responsibility is to help find resolution. So there's something that should be identified. I think the focus should be on how well are we finding resolutions to problems, not necessarily documenting that there are problems in the district. Although I don't shy away from that there are concerns that should be shared, but this is not a department that focuses on deficits. This is a department that focuses on also coming to responsible resolutions, because people may not be happy with the outcome, even if the ombudsman is involved, because policy still trumps, trumps everything that we do in the district. So we will provide that information. Once Ms. Johnson has an opportunity to disaggregate that information and share that information with district administration, we can provide an update to the board regarding areas that we've seen a number of calls or concerns from. And as she shared earlier, we are looking at adding an additional method to our, to our arsenal, where a parent or a community member or whomever may be able to reach out directly to the district and share, or share information with us about something that we should know about, or looking for some resolution to something, and then we'll be able to document that even a little bit better. But for a first, first year, I think things have been going quite well, with just being able to get, get, keep the ears on the ground. And really, that's what she's doing for us. There's often things that come to my desk that I'll ask Ms. Johnson to look into, to, to, to try to provide resolutions. Many of those things are things that take place at the school. So it could be an issue with grading in the classroom, or something like that, that we just need to make sure that the parent and the teacher and the administrator had an opportunity to discuss their problems before they come to the district office, for the district office to solve the problem when they haven't even gone through the proper steps of addressing the issue at the lowest level first. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Dr. Johnson? You're on mute again. No, Dr. Johnson, you're on mute.
No, I'm trying to...
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
I'm trying to get it off. Okay, it should be off now.
Okay. When you, when you're talking and you're cutting it off, I can't tell if you're still talking or telling me you're turning it off.
Well, I was trying to see if you could read my lips, and I'm trying to turn it on, because I kept hitting the button and it didn't work. But anyway, want to address what Dr. Davis said. Dr. Davis, thank you for that comment. And I think it's very important that the board has information on the trends that's going on, because Ms. Johnson mentioned that it's 857 calls. So that's very important for board members to know what the calls were concerning. We don't have to know all the details, but we can know we received 50 calls concerning buses, we received 20 calls concerning suspensions. So, again, I think that's very important for us to know. I know your take was that it should come directly to you, and then you guys sent it to us. But again, you work for us, and as a board, we're asking, or I'm asking, that we know what the trends are. We don't have to know the details, but I would like for Ms. Johnson to give that information to you, since you are her direct supervisor. And then I would like you to share that with us, since we're your direct supervisor. It's not to see how many complaints we have or comments, it's more so to see what's going on, so we can tell the public, we have someone in place. So we started with 857 calls. Now, we're down to 400 calls, so we need to show the importance and the purpose of this position. And if Mr. Manning can recall, many years ago, before the others got on this board, we had colleagues that didn't feel like this position was very important. And we wanted this position for many years, long before the new board members on, and they didn't see a need for that. It's obvious we need that, just looking at the number that she presented to us. So we need to be able to share why this position is important, and how she's saving time with administration and building those relationships with parents, the community, the board members, and the district office. So my point would be, I would love to see a trend or some type of design with the number of calls and what the calls are concerning, without going into details. Thank you.
And I think if I understood Dr. Davis correctly, he was going to provide that report, he was just going to provide some additional detail to show.
Absolutely, absolutely, Mr. Manning. I, I, I want to just say for the record, I am quite aware that I report directly to the board, as my role as superintendent. I am, I seek no, I seek no position higher than the position that I currently have been blessed and honored to have of this district. And so my responsibility is, is to, to students of Richland School District 2, and I, when I report to the board on how well I do that responsibility, I've simply stated that I, I think it's important for us to maintain the proper protocols when it comes to the operation of the district. The governance power and the administrative side. I have been extremely transparent in sharing information, extremely transparent in the sharing information with this board, and shy away from not, not ever providing that. But I think it's important to have context. Absolutely, 850-some-odd calls, sounds like a lot of calls. There are 28,000 students, 180 days a year at school. 180 times five is 900. So if Ms. Johnson only gets five calls per day, I have no idea what those five calls are, but that needs to be put into context. That data should be disaggregated, and I should be one of the first people to be aware of that data before that information is shared, it to the board or to the public. And that's all I ask, out of respect for the position between superintendent and board members. However, if that's not the desire of the board, then I should be made aware that that's no longer the desire of the board. But I'd be more than willing, I've not seen the data myself as of it being disaggregated. And that's something that we're working on this end of the school year, it's not, it's not quite here yet. Once we had an opportunity to look at that, we'll be happy to provide that report to you, the same as we provide any report when it comes to students' performance academically, and anything else that the board is asking, asking to have. It's not the information, but it's what we, what the point I was trying to make is what we do with the information, is what I want us to be very careful about, and how we, and how we use it. But absolutely, Dr. Elkins, Johnson, we will provide that information to you all in an update.
All right, I've got, I've got Ms. Mackie, Ms. Agostini, and then Ms. Johnson. I don't know, I saw your hand up. Do you want to speak before we get the other board members' questions, or?
I just wanted to make a point of clarification. The number is reflective of the Richland 2 Contact Us Forms, as well as emails and phone calls, so it's not 857 calls.
Okay, 857 contacts.
Right.
Okay. Ms. Mackie, and then Ms. Agostini.
Just wanted to make a point of clarification. I know that pre-school board, when I worked in capacity as a school, as a school improvement council member and chair, and I have my children in school, one of the things I spent a lot of time doing was just helping people figure out what to do. If they had a complaint or a concern, or just a question, or just, you know, wanting to tell someone something good, bad, or indifferent, helping people, as a, as a school improvement council member, to figure out where to go, what to do, who to email, who to, you know, send it out to, how to get contact information. And in that vein, one of the reasons that I was advocating for an ombudsman position is because it just helps people know where to go. So I just want to make a point of clarification that I don't think that all of the folks who are calling necessarily have complaints. There may be complaints, there may be questions, but I know that a huge part of that position is simply helping people figure out what to do, where to go, who to contact, who to contact about, you know, school lunch fees, or whatever it may be. But a huge component of that position is directing people and telling them what to do to get what they need to have done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Agostini? Ms. Agostini, you're on mute.
Thank you. I wanted to agree and concur with Dr. Elkins, and just, you know, I took interest in tracking trends, because that's what Ms. Johnson had on her, what the ombudsman can do. So when we get the information, I'm not looking for, you know, one kid did this, one did that. If we see a huge trend, that's the information that I'd love to hear from Dr. Davis after he gets that information, and areas where we might be able to work on that, so we can communicate that with the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Dr. Davis, I do appreciate the reminder that when we get that information, we continue to work through you on any of the trends or issues that we see, then that, that your role. Dr. Elkins?
Oops. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, and I think we all know that, when we're asking for information, I think we all are all aware that... I think we all are all aware that the information goes to Dr. Davis and comes to us. So I don't think that's something that we have to say and I don't think that's something that I said. When I say get the information to us, it's understood that the information goes to Dr. Davis and triggers down to us.
I understand. I didn't mention your name. I didn't say anything about-
Well, I just wanted to be clear to make sure we had an understanding of that.
Um, we're clear.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, uh we will now move on. Dr. Davis, to item seven dot two, an update on COVID nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, members of the board and to our partners that are watching um via uh live stream. Um I have additional information regarding COVID nineteen. Very, nothing much has changed since our last board meeting and the last update that I provided. We are still, we still have not returned back to normal operations. A date for all employees to return to work has not been set as of yet. And so employees are still being called in based on their essential roles and the roles at, if they're essential at that time. And so there are still, many of our employees are still working remotely, uh including our teachers. Um, if you do have to report to work and some have and in some situations they have had to come into the office, there's certain precautions that every employee must take upon arrival to the office. The first precaution is if you feel sick at all, you should stay at home. And so we've commuted that and we've communicated that uh emphatically out to the different departments and out to our employees. So if you're feeling, if you're not feeling well, then we ask that you please stay home. We are conducting temperature checks uh upon arrival to your, your location. Um we're asking and requiring that you can, that they continue to social or per uh physically distance themselves at least six feet um at all times from one another. Uh we are wearing face masks at all times when we're in the building, out in the uh general public area of our spaces, within our office spaces. For example, here, we're not wearing masks, but if someone were to come into our office, um then we are, um we are practicing wearing masks. And we ask that employees continuously and repeatedly wash their hands um throughout the day and while specifically here at the office. Um, we began the process, of course, as preparing for the return to school for the twenty twenty-one school year. As of right now, we have no official timeline of when the state will officially uh reopen schools and our, we are waiting for the guidance from the State Department of Education and the governor's office. Um, we are also waiting, however, it's, we're, we're not waiting to be proactive. So we began the process of proactively planning for the return of school whenever that may be. Uh as I shared with you all in the past, uh as we wrapped up one task force for graduation, we have another, several other task forces um that are in place. One being the, the reopening of school and that task force is being led by our assistant superintendent, um Dr. James Ann Shealy. That task force is broken up into four parts, four components, um or to four different teams. A team that's focusing on safety, teams that's focusing on operations, and a team focusing on teaching and learning. And then uh a team that's focusing on our communications. Their work is being guided um by the fa- the, by the following goals. Um the, the physical school environment should embody public health guidelines to prevent COVID nineteen outbreaks and additional closures. Um translation for us, uh we open in a safe and efficient manner. Our goal and objective is to open our schools up and when it's safe and, and, and in a safe and sufficient manner. The plan must uh produce enough confidence that our families, our students and educators feel comfortable to return uh for face-to-face teaching in our schools. Communication with all partners, however, is critical and will be the key. The task force is made up of, of teachers, parents, principals, and various district-level personnel with expertise in those four areas. And so it's important that we have uh a, a good diversity of voices at the table. And so we've included teachers and parents uh as well as principals and various other officials uh throughout our district to look at the reopening of school. Our task force is closely monitoring, monitoring the um Accelerate Ed Task Force. And we do anticipate receiving um their recommendation for the opening of schools for twenty twenty-one school year around June the twelfth. So while we're waiting um to receive those recommendations, our team is researching uh three possible uh scenarios for our school district. One is the virtual scenario. What does that look like if we have to remain in a virtual platform for an extended period of time? So the virtual, traditional, uh returning back to school in a traditional setting, I guess with the modifications of social and physical distancing. And then some sort of hybrid, uh hybrid uh version of virtual and traditional, which is what we typically call a blended model. And so we're looking at three different scenarios uh in the district. I will share with you that we ran, just as a point of information, just for the board and, and those that are listening, we ran a m- a model uh bus route uh to one of our elementary schools. I believe the elementary school was Bethel Handbury. Um, and looking at the number of students who ride the particular buses that they ride, spacing them one seat, um a seat in between, uh one student to every seat with a, a seat vacant in between those two students. Um, it would take us, it took us roughly, I think that what I got back was two hours to run that, to run those routes for, for elementary schools. So if we had to do a modif- a modification where we could only put one student on a, on a seat, one student per seat with a vacant seat in between each seat, it would take two hours to run a route to Bethel, uh run to Bethel Handbury students to school. So those are gonna be some of the challenges that was, we hearing things. The practical side of actually doing them may be more difficult than, than, than people believe. Um and so that's, that's where we stand right now. And then our meals served up to this point, um we've served over two hundred and six thousand four hundred and forty-one meals between Mar- March sixteenth and May, May twentieth. The federal government has announced that the waivers related to how we provide free meals to children will remain in place to August thirty-first. Uh that means we can continue to provide grab-and-go meals that we are currently distributing through the summer. And so we, a lot of us have been waiting on those meals. We can continue to do that the way we're doing it now through the summer. So Dexo, our food service um partner, is currently evaluating all of our current locations to determine if we need uh any modifications for the summer months. Uh we will be assured to announce any changes. And the current locations and times for distribution of breakfast and lunches are listed on our website at uh richlandtwo.org forward slash uh free meals. Uh Mr. Chair and members of the board and community, that concludes um the COVID nineteen, superintendent's COVID nineteen update for this board meeting. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair?
Mr.? Can't hear you, James. Mr. Man.
You're muted.
You're muted. Who's muted? Am I muted?
No, all right. I'm sorry, Ms. Mackey, then Dr. Holmes, then Ms. Agostini.
Thank you. Dr. Davis, thank you for taking um efforts to keep the rest of, of um uh of updates, period, not just in board meetings, but on social media, through emails and, and phone calls. I appreciate that. Question for you, how are you all navigating um? I guess the, the different initiatives or suggestions you're receiving. I know the president is saying that we need to open schools immediately. Um Accelerate ED with, without any guidance, Accelerate ED. The governor is um deferring to the superintendent, state superintendent of education. And just following the Accelerate Ed Task Force meetings, um we're pretty much at a, we're not sure. We're trying to figure out how to um put out immediate fires of, of keeping folks safe before we figure out um what to do about schools, starting how that's gonna happen, how that's gonna look. And I know most recently there, there, you know, we've run into some funding issues um at a state level as with regard to getting federal funding that the state thought they were gonna receive, but we didn't receive. Um, I wanna first of all commend you for, for trying to, to navigate this slippery slope, which is what it is. It's uncharted territory. I appreciate all that you're doing. And if you could just, you know, how are you navigating that?
Well, we're fortunate-
That, that's a big question. It's a loaded question, I know.
Well, I, I think one, we, we're, we're fortunate um in Richland Two because we have a great community. Um, we have the supportive board, uh we have tremendous administrators and teachers and parents and students. And so they have just simply just been uh very patient. Um, even though I think we have been doing a, a, we've been doing well, a good job when it comes to getting the information out. Um, they've been very patient and we've continued to try to keep open lines of communication. One way is having diverse voices on your diverse, uh diverse voices on your task force teams. And really looking at those, those areas of impact. So whether it's in funding uh with COVID, with the COVID nineteen um CARES money that's coming through, whether it's with graduation task force, closing of schools, opening schools, and special education concerns um led by either assistant superintendents or our chiefs. Those things have been going well and we've been communicating frequently at the district office. Um, I, and, and everyone's providing input and support in those areas. Um, we have been following the Accelerate Ed as well as uh um South Carolina, Southern South Carolina uh task force closely. And so we're fortunate to also have Patrick Kelly on Accelerate Ed Task Force, uh who represents our district. So Patrick is able to keep us abreast of things that are coming down the uh pipe. We have, I've been communicating um directly with um individuals from DHEC as well as Prisma Health on ongoing concerns or questions that may come up from a healthcare um stance. Um, our nurse as well, uh Dawn McGillis, is doing a phenomenal job of keeping us abreast of those uh changes and um, um protocols that we need to be taking place to ensure that people feel safe. Uh and then we, we're in a, in a, in a safe, in, in safe spaces should we return. I do have some pressing questions that I have not received some answers to that I'm continuing to try to work through. One is where are we in the uh phasing? Are, is South Carolina still in phase one, phase two, and phase, or phase three? Uh when is the anticipated time that we will come out of phase one? I believe we're in phase one. I could be wrong, but I believe we're still in phase one based on the CDC guidelines. When is our anticipated time to come out of that phase? Is that gonna be uh um county by county? Or is that gonna be statewide because Richland County has the most uh positive cases of any county in the state? So you can't look at us, we may be a little bit different from another county in our state. And so by, are we looking at this county by county? Is there a certain percentage of counties or a certain percentage of the population that we need to be, that comes out of those, um comes out of the phase before we reopen the state or reopen a county? Those are some questions I have to ask. Two-nine-two-two-three and two-nine-two-two-nine are our highest areas of, uh of, of individuals that are infected. Um, so we have to be very cautious about um that. And, and so our plans are, are really based around um not, uh, uh, our timeline is about safety. Uh and that's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to assess at all times. When is it gonna be the most at, at safe uh time for us to return back uh to a traditional um school setting?
That's exactly what I was looking for, Dr. Davis. I know that, I appreciate what you're doing, but I know there are a, a lot of moving parts and, you know, an unending number of variables. And so I appreciate your expounding upon that and for people to get an appreciation of um all that's going on behind the decisions that are made and are yet to be made. Thank you so much, Dr. Davis. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Holmes, you're next.
Um, um, Dr. Davis. Um, I just had a quick question. I, I think I saw it on the news recently. I think it was China that they're reopening their schools. Have we, have we possibly looked into some of the things that these um foreign countries are doing to open up their schools? And are we incorporating any of those techniques into the discussions of, about reopening?
Um, we have, we are aware of some schools' systems around the country that have begun the process of reopening. However, their periods of closure or state shelters were, were a lot more extreme and long than, than ours. Um, and so they had to meet a certain qua- criteria before they were able to then reopen their schools and their economy. Um, I don't really know if that's the same standard as, that, that we are adhering to in our state or in our country. Um, but we are aware of it. We're also aware that in, in, in some countries, I think it was uh, some school systems, I believe it was one in France, where they opened up too soon and they, within a week, they had seventy new cases in the schools and they had to turn right back around and shut the schools down. I think for our parents and for our community, one of the, one of the things we, we, we wanna get this right is w- we can't get our parents and our students in a position, particularly our parents, in a position where they are now going back to work and then all of a sudden we're, we have to do an abrupt halt and shut everything down again. Um, and so it would be, it would be advantageous for us to gradually um do that as a school system, as, as a state, as, as a county, to gradually work back toward that way. So that way we're not one hundred percent back. And I, and I anticipate that's kinda where we, where we may be, we may be leaning or leaning uh from state. But we won't know more um until uh we hear a little bit more. And I, and I, I don't say that lightly, but w- we haven't really been a part of those conversations at that, at the state level. Um, and that's something as superintendents that we, we gotta do a better job, I think, in fighting for it to be more part of those conversations. Cause we, we're getting the information just right before you all, as the public, will be getting it.
Uh, um, Dr. Davis, thank you for that. Uh but I was kind of leading more towards, I saw on, they had a, I, I should have copied the special down, but they had where the students were wearing masks and they had certain things his kids had to step on. I was talking more about have we looked at any of those techniques? Not on the, on a specific timetable, but certain things that they were putting in place to combat it if we went back. Have we looked at any of those foreign countries' techniques?
Yeah, I, I think if we, Dr. Holmes, if we come back, we will have to do six feet apart in classrooms. We will, so they're, they're doing things like spreading their six feet apart. They're having students wear face masks. They're keeping students in the same classrooms. So many of those, those strategies that they're using have been or are being considered as things that we would replicate. What I, what I've been interested to say about that is that may be more challenging here. I, I can't really say why maybe, but I know for a, a, a fact that it will be more, it will be challenging here uh in, in the United States to do some of the things that they may be doing in, in, in other countries when it comes to uh the social, removing the social aspect of, of education. Um, and requiring, um, I don't know how many desks we're gonna be able to get in a classroom if we can only do six feet of, of desks. And if you all have visited our classrooms at the elementary level, you know, some of our classrooms have already redesigned themselves programmatically to be community-based types classrooms with very little desks to begin with. So they all, they have couches and bean bags and things of that nature. We don't even have those desks in those classrooms. So I, I have no idea if, if that's gonna be the case. We're gonna have to make sure that we uh, we even have the, the appropriate F and Es to make sure we can do some of these things. And we're, and we're one of the fortunate districts.
Yeah, I think I was, um, one of my colleagues, it was Taiwan and they were, they were like coming in, they had to step on sanitizer and things like that. And, you know, those kinda little things, that's what I was kinda trying to get at. We were just looking at it. But I appreciate your answer with that, Dr. Davis.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini.
Um, thank you, Mr. Manning. Dr. Davis, I really appreciate your update. A quick question, I'm not sure whether you'll be able to answer this or not, but have we been notified of any students or employees that have had the coronavirus?
We have not, not to my knowledge. I have not been notified of anyone, any employee that has uh COVID nineteen or I'm aware of any student at this time that has tested positive for COVID nineteen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, other questions or comments? Dr. Davis, I know we also, I, I sent you a question earlier just for the public. There was a question about use of our athletic facilities for the Richland Two athletic team. That's something that we're waiting, again, on the state, the um, the uh school board league, high school league to tell us whether that's possible.
Yeah, the high school league is also ro- working closely with Accelerate Ed Task Force and they're, they're kinda waiting to see what their recommendations are gonna be before they will release. Um, they have some, some guidelines, so a draft guideline of what that would look like. But none of that will take place until um the Accelerate Ed Task Force uh and the governor and uh Ms. Spearman actually um says, okay, this is, this is the plan, or this is go. I, I do believe that though they won't be at, those guidelines won't, will not be as specific as the CDC guidelines. It will be more like recommendations of if you decide to open schools or if you decide to have face-to-face summer school or if you decided put, drive, use school buses, then these are the guidelines. It won't be specific. And as I, I anticipate them pushing that back to the, the local level, to decide at the local level whether or not we will move forward. Um, uh unless, in some states, I think the governors have mandated that schools will start uh at, at their regular, uh their regular scheduled times to start. But as of right now, in South Carolina, that has not been, I haven't heard anything. Um, I haven't heard our governor leaning in that, in that direction.
All right, a lot of challenges. Um, thank you. Next, we have uh item nine or eight dot one, a draft agenda for June ninth, twenty twenty. Dr. Davis?
Uh, the draft agenda for the June ninth meeting, uh that, uh, that meeting is scheduled to start with our um public session beginning uh at four-thirty and then we will go into executive session. We're expected to come out of the executive session uh at five o'clock to begin the public session where we'll have our um, where we will uh have our call to order. Um, our executive session items that are scheduled for this board meeting will be student appeals, a student adult education request. Um, uh, it has right near on, on here, um, the one that I printed off. I don't know if the one you, you all are looking at says superintendent evaluation. But I believe, Mr. Manning, from our conversation today, that that's not gonna be on that uh at that board meeting. But I believe, Mr. Manning, from our conversation today, that that's not gonna be on that, uh, at that board meeting.
That's correct. We, we decided that that should not be there, so I'm not sure.
It could be an old draft, um, that Tamika.
Yeah, I think you do have an old draft, cause I don't see that here.
Alright. We will have.
Oh, it does have it on here. You're correct, it does. And I don't know, that shouldn't have been there. We had decided a while back that that was gonna be on.
Another. Um, we'll have our inspirational moment, uh, our approval of the agenda. We'll ask for the approval of the consent agenda. We'll have the voting items as listed, student appeals and adult education requests if there should be any. Um, we have on here, uh, policy CCA, which was scheduled to be on this board meeting, but we took policy CCA off. We took that policy off, uh, as a result of, um, uh, uh, one of our, our assistant superintendent, Mr. Keith Price, uh, who is gonna be moving on down to Georgetown County to serve as superintendent. Georgetown's a lucky county to have Mr. Price coming down to work for, uh, work for the p- uh, people of Georgetown County. And so I need to revisit the, uh, revisit the org chart as a result of that change. And so that is also something that, um, is, wasn't on this board meeting that we'll, we'll bring back to you all in June. Um, and then we'll have the COVID nineteen update from the superintendent, followed by the approval of the June thirty items, uh, agenda items, asking the board for approval of those, board superintendent comments, and if we need a second executive session, we would have one and vote on those items as needed and then adjournment.
Alright, thank you. Board members, questions or comments? Alright, with no questions or comments, we will now move on to item, um, ten dot one, which is, or I'm sorry, nine dot one, approval of that draft agenda.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Mackey.
I'm sorry, I wanted to move to approve the draft agenda items for the June ninth, two thousand twenty Richland Two School Board of Trustees meeting.
Ms. Mackey, would you, um, possibly, uh, also mention that the, uh, superintendent evaluation, that with the exception of the superintendent evaluation on that draft agenda?
Absolutely. I'm happy to restate the motion. I move to approve the draft agenda items for June ninth, two thousand twenty Richland Two School Board of Trustees meeting with the exception of the superintendent's agenda. That means evaluation.
Thank you very much. If I can have a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Agostini.
Would you also like to remove the vote for a policy CCA?
Uh, I think Dr. Davis, um, info, uh, is actually gonna be ready for us to take the vote on that. Um, we, we don't have.
It, it, it would need to be no action requested. It says, no business, action requested. It would be no action requested.
I got you. Okay, so we'll, so we need, Ms. Agostini, will we make a friendly amendment, or not a friendly amendment? Will you make a secondary motion to the primary motion to please remove that, or to change that?
I would like to make a secondary motion to have the policy CCA, uh, no action requested.
Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion? We can do a hand vote, please, um, of everybody that's in favor. Anybody against? Hand vote. You voted against your own motion?
Oh. I was, I'm sorry. No, I'm not voting against that motion. The whole thing I'm voting against. So I, excuse me, I do support this. Thank you, Mr. Manning.
Okay, so if I confirm, it was a unanimous motion for the secondary motion?
Thank you.
Alright, is there any further discussion on the primary motion now coupled to the secondary motion? With that, we will now take a vote. Everybody, um, did I see it pop up, Tamika?
You should. I can close it and, and try it again.
That's right. We'll, we'll do another, we'll do a voice vote. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hands up, aye. Everybody opposed, like sign.
Nay.
Motion passes six to one. Alright, we'll now move on to item ten dot one, board and superintendent comments. I'm gonna go in order with my screen. So Dr. Holmes. Uh, you just muted yourself.
Muted. You're muted, Dr. Holmes.
You're muted, Dr. Holmes.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'd like to say congratulations to all our graduates and I'm looking forward to our graduation ceremonies that are coming up and everybody have a great evening.
Thank you. Ms. Agostini?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yesterday we honored brave men and women who gave their lives for the service of our country. I just wanna thank them, their family, friends and loved ones for, and all their sacrifices for our freedoms and our country. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Shad.
Well, good evening. I also wanna echo the sentiments for, um, those who have fallen. And we do, um, memorialize them as we did. We took, we took a pause on yesterday to do that. It's not necessarily a celebration, but it's a solemn moment to, um, make sure that we, uh, shine a light on our heroes and of course, be appreciative of the freedoms that we have in this country. Um, I would also like to congratulate, uh, the two thousand twenty graduates. Um, in particular, one in my household was graduating from Spring Valley on Monday. So I'll be happy to be in attendance on that and take part, but I wish all parents, um, well and kudos. You also graduated as well, along with our graduates, so breathe a sigh of relief. Um, and of course, we wish them well in the next part of their journeys. And I also wanna congratulate those who are being promoted from fifth grade to sixth grade and promoted from eighth grade to ninth grade. Um, they are marking this milestone, however, they still have some time to go. And so I wish them well, um, especially in light of COVID nineteen. I would, um, express to everyone to still remain safe, prac- practice, uh, physical distancing, but still remain social, cause that's who we are. We are socially human beings, so let's continue to do that. Um, and thank goodness for technology, so we can do that even in this, uh, on this platform. So I appreciate each and every one of my fellow board members and of course, Dr. Davis, and look forward to seeing you all, uh, next week and hopefully we'll have great weather and fast talkers. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Alkens Johnson.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Wanna say congratulations to Keith Price. I am so proud of you and you are so deserving of your new position as superintendent of Georgetown. Kudos to you. And Georgetown is in for a treat. You're going to be awesome there. Also want to say thank you to Ms. Johnson. I know your work is hard, but I appreciate your professionalism with sharing your presentation. And I look forward to learning more about what goes on in your position. And most definitely want to say congratulations in advance to our seniors. I'm so excited, looking forward to seeing you guys on next week and you guys have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey.
At this point, there's not much to say, but ditto, echoed the Senate, in the midst of our colleagues. You all have a wonderful evening. Bless you all. Continue to be safe and prayers for all of your families and loved ones during this time. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Dr. Caution Parker.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, just wanna echo, uh, congratulations along with some of our board members, um, our new graduates coming up next week. Um, I'd also like to say congratulations to Keith Price and I take very, very personal pride in, um, in congratulating him. I hired him as a first-year teacher. Taught his wife as she was in sixth grade over at Yale Wright, so we go way, way back. And, um, to start him off as a first-year teacher, I will never forget that we had four students coming to the, uh, to them, to the TLC program in sixth grade. And of four students, one was the s- son of Mike Montgomery. And that's how I met Mike. We became very good friends and still are. But anyway, during that time, I met with the, with the parents, with the four children. And they were very concerned because these are fifth graders going into sixth grade, taking Algebra One. And I had just hired Keith. And so I assured them I would take care of it. They would all be together all the way through. And I went to Keith and I said, this is do or die time. And Keith, of course, the man that he is, the person that he is, um, did a fantastic job with those students. Taught them, I believe, all the way through Algebra One, geometry, and then we had to take them over to Northeast for, for, to carry on even further than that. But, um, but I'm very proud of Keith and I know he's gonna do well. And along with that, whenever you have, um, someone that's worked, um, sort of under you, under your supervision, there's a point of pride in that person as well. So I wanna thank Dr. Davis for doing a great job in his leadership role. His job is to prepare future leaders and that's what he's done. So congratulations to him as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Davis?
It's, uh, um, it's been, uh, a very busy month. Uh, we've been paying tributes to multiple groups of students who've excelled at noticeable, at a noticeable pace. So Richland Two has some one hundred and thirty eighth graders who were named South Carolina Junior Scholars for their exceptional academic talent this year as well. Over a hundred and thirty eighth graders. That's tremendous. In Richland Two, we've identified fifty-one premier scholars and these are seniors who are at the top of their class or have earned national scholastic accolades like National Merit or U.S. Presidential Scholarships. And we've also had the stories of our turnaround students. Um, these are things that we would normally be in attendance together um, and celebrate together, but we've had to do them virtually, um, and through other forms of, uh, other forms of, of communications. But our turnaround students, they continue to inspire us. We applaud all of our students who are going the extra mile to achieve their goals, uh, no matter how challenging they may be. Um, I also wanna take an opportunity to congratulate, say congratulations to Spring Valley High School Senior Mamzy Garpadi, um, who has earned, has been named a twenty twenty Presidential Scholar. The U.S. Presidential Scholars Program was established back in nineteen sixty-four to recognize and honor some of our nation's most distinguishing graduating high school seniors. And Scarpadi participates in a discovery magnet program and is involved in HOSA, Circles of Friends, Math and Science National Honor Societies, and is a member of the track and field team, and he's the vice president of the Key Club. He's done research on telling the, uh, metal organic frameworks to increase, uh, semiconductors efficiencies. And, uh, I invite our Richland Two families to join me at another Facebook Live on May twenty-eighth at three P.M. In addition to sharing an update, I will announce the district's twenty nineteen, twenty twenty wicked teacher of the year. And, uh, I, um, I, I, I pray that that's right. That it's the twenty twenty, the nineteen, twenty wicked teacher of the year. I'm almost certain that it is. But I will be prepared to, uh, to announce that. If you watch our Facebook, you can post questions to be answered. Um, there've been some great questions on our Facebook Live, so uh, we look forward to answering those questions live. If you are not on Facebook, like I am, I'm not on Facebook, you can catch the update on R2 TV, uh, channel, um, thirteen oh three on Spectrum Cable or on the district's live stream website. And, uh, I, I, I'm gonna wait until, uh, the next board meeting to give remarks concerning my good friend uh, and one of my, my dear, uh, partners, uh, Keith Price, um, which will be one of his last board meetings. So I'm gonna wait till that time and pass. Mr. Chair?
Alright, well, I also wanna, um, want to congratulate Keith and look forward to, um, the next meeting when you make your comments and, and maybe we can provide Keith with an opportunity to, to say a few words at that time as well. It's, uh, Keith, I've worked with you for over a decade now. It's hard to believe this district won't feel the same without you here, um, and all the roles that you've been in and the pleasure to look forward to. Hearing from you, even though we will miss you tremendously, um, and, and your family too. It's not just you, it's the whole family, uh, component to that. But, uh, do you wanna congratulate our, uh, graduates? All of our students and families. It's just been a tremendous year with a lot of challenges, our families to really uh, come to the table. Dr. Davis, I think you sent us the stat on the number of students that we have not been able to get in touch with, extremely small number. I think, was it like one percent or something?
It, it, it's been, was one percent, uh, right now. Thank you for bringing that out, Mr. Manning. I think that's a tremendous, uh, tremendous achievement and something our teachers and administrators, the community should be very proud of, um, that we've been able to make communications. Now, that one percent, we still need to, to try to figure out what's going on with them, but, um, with over twenty-eight thousand students in our school district, I, I, that, that's very good. That is, that is extremely, extremely good.
It does show tremendous effort on the part of staff as well as our families and, and community. Um, and this school is such an important part of their lives and they've maintained that a connection with us throughout this time. And, uh, board members, thank you for all your support as we've gone through this, um, through this effort, both with administration, with each other, as board members and myself. In the, the chair role, it's certainly been a different year in how we communicate and the things that we have in front of us. With that, I am gonna call for the, uh, adjournment of our meeting. If I can have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Mr. Shad?
I wholeheartedly move that we adjourn the May twenty-six, two thousand twenty regular board meeting of the Richland Two, Richland School District Two Board of Trustees.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion? Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Everyone opposed, like sign. Motion passes unanimous.
Thank y'all. See y'all next week.
Have a good evening.
Have a good evening.